Minimize that. Actually, mute that. Now you can minimize the window. You can go to zoom. You can hang on.
Harry, you want a new job?
What? Tactical?
Yes, it's all.
I used to minimize the...
Yeah, minimize that. Because that doesn't need to be, it just runs in the background. And then we can mute the audio until the meeting starts.
The mayor is in, we can start the meeting or we can start now, for you all.
Pushing in.
I just sent her the information.
She's up there waiting.
Oh, there she is. Okay, yeah.
Where is she?
Uh, way out there.
On the right with pink box.
Yeah, pit and mint, and then we are ready to go.
Okay.
All right, six oh one, we'll call our special meeting, word. Give the pledge of allegiance.
Now I have to take a court. Up, up towards the report on this computer, right there, yeah.
There we go. Pledge of allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll go.
House Member Bob here, House Member Happy here, House Member Keller. House Member Seager.
Here.
House Member Pruitt here, House Member Fallon here, and Mayor Wood. You. She's on mute.
Can you hear us?
I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you, Abby, and you've just got one action item to talk about the prepared food and beverage tax.
All right, so there was a misinterpretation of the information and the costs associated with the prepared food and beverage tax. About measure, there is no cost to cities if the measure is not a primary or general election of even years. There, we operated under the premise that the costs were only passed on in special elections outside of the four election cycles of March, May, August, and November in the state each year. Because our measure is going to evoke in an odd year and is the only item on the ballot in Hood River County, the city will cover the whole cost. The county says the cost will be roughly $15,000. I confirmed this with a call with the county late Wednesday, eight twenty seven. Although this cost was not planned, the general fund and fire EMS fund have sufficient funds to cover the cost due to vacancies in staff. Below is a breakdown of what funds will not be spent due to staff vacancies in the paramedic, community liaison, and finance clerk positions. Thirty seven thousand from the finance clerk position, twelve thousand from the liaison position, and thirty, almost thirty three thousand for the paramedic position broken out by each specific line item within the salary, within the compensation. These amounts are estimated on start dates of September fifteenth for the finance clerk and community liaison, and start date of August eighteenth for the paramedic. The health benefit amount is for the time the physician was vacant plus sixty day waiting period. The purse benefit amount is for the time the physician was vacant plus six month waiting period. None of the hires or applicants were already vested in purs. And the rest of the funds are calculated based off the time the position was vacant only. The committee liaison position does not receive health benefits. This is not ideal, however, even if the measure fails, the funds will be well spent. If the measure fails, we can collect exit poll information and adjust our request for the November twenty twenty six ballot. The city is currently working with state election office to create a flyer that does not violate any election laws. Staff have also done preliminary outreach to businesses. The guide for businesses is complete and ready to present as well. Staff had planned to do extensive outreach on the, on the tax starting at the end of September through November fourth. If council wishes to remove the measure from the ballot, we must notify the county by Thursday, September fourth. The ballot measure was originally approved via resolution one five two one on July fourteenth. Attorney Cleveland noted the council may vote to remove the measure from the ballot as long as an action is clearly stated and a roll call vault is held. The tax review is resolution one five two one and the complete business guide. I will state that a, the action being taken is to remove the measure from the ballot. If no action is taken, it stays on the ballot. Also in front of you is kind of a review of the financial impact and the additional strain it would put on both the fire department and the general fund if we wait another year to implement the food tax.
So if I can be saying correctly, we do nothing, it stays on the ballot?
Correct.
So well, if we want to discuss this, we need to have a motion to remove it from the ballot?
Correct, it'd be, it'd be a motion to remove it from the ballot, yes.
I'll, I'll make the motion to remove, approve the removal of the prepared food and beverage tax from the November fourth, twenty twenty five ballot.
Thank you, we got a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been seconded, discussion. Yes.
I just wanted, I mean, so it won't cost anything if we do it in May?
Uh, May of twenty six, no, it will not.
Okay, so I I have a few problems with that, you know, everybody that I've talked to, people that I've talked to about this in the food and beverage industry, I've not been talked to about it. We had the double whammy of the double fifty percent, fifty percent. And I, I just think, I think putting fifteen thousand, I just think it's just throwing fifteen thousand dollars away. I think we should just wait till next year when we don't have to worry about fifty fifty.
Can you clarify what you mean by the double whammy?
The charter, I mean, requiring in a odd year, a non, a let non even year that we have to have fifty percent of the voters turn out and fifty percent of those fifty percent have to vote yes. And even for the general election, I don't, I think we, we barely got that with the general election, with the presidential election. So I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a steep, steep climb as, as far as I'm concerned.
Can I ask a court, I'd like a clarifying question, so just to understand our options. Option one is we don't take action tonight and it goes in November. Option two is we, we remove it tonight and then we repass a resolution that sets it for May of twenty sixth?
Well, I have to go back and check the charter, I think that fifty percent limit is also only taken off during a general election. So even if we put it back in May twenty six, we still have to meet that fifty percent. I could be wrong, I'd have to double check.
Yeah, I thought it doesn't matter when the election is, you have to get fifty percent.
No, it's general election on even years, so that's only in November.
That requires the fifty percent, but doesn't require?
That doesn't require the fifty percent, yeah.
All right, so, so moving forward, so we, we re-put it on for May of twenty six and, and working to confirm what the requirement is. And then option three is we put it on for November twenty six. Is that what I?
If, yeah, we, we could, okay, so do both May and November next year.
So May, just to clarify, real quick, sorry to interrupt you. Uh, May would mean that we still have the fifty percent requirement, but there would be no cost.
Correct.
We do it now, there's the fifteen thousand dollar approximate cost plus the fifty percent requirement, or we wait till the general election, November twenty twenty six, and we don't have to pay the thirteen thousand and the fifty percent requirement is no longer
Correct.
required, yeah.
Okay, so and this, 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 sorry, this, this, the, the financial analysis. Well, just reading. It, it's kind of a generic, he doesn't say, well, the impacts of a May twenty sixth ballot, successful ballot measure, Lisa, blah, blah, blah. And then in November, it just like, it just generically.
It's very generic, yeah, didn't have time to do the, a deep drill on specific funding, yeah.
Okay. So I would like to ask a, a question of the chief, because I feel like this is most impacting your operations. Do, do you have a, I, I guess I want to ask two questions. One, you know, I know you've been talking to members of public about this. Do you have a sense on what you're hearing on, you know, whether the plurality will be there, that's my first question. I, I worry less about getting to fifty percent because I've talked to a few people. We got seven motivated council members. We can hit every voter in this darn town, we can do that in a weekend or two, it would not be that hard. And I feel if we effectively communicate on a three by five card how awesome this thing is, we'll get to fifty percent. Even if someone vote no, that's fine, because I really feel like, that's where I'm at. So I want to give the, the chief, uh, uh, your observation, how you're feeling this would pass, whether it would get the enough yeses or not. And then the second thing is, you know, do you have a preference on where you'd like this thing to get, you know, approved? How soon, how, how, how stressed is the system that, you know, if you were to kind of prioritize these, where would you say, you know, November is great? You know, November this year will be great, November next year will be really tough. She don't ask, and can you give me a sense on those two questions?
Yeah, so I've talked to, I haven't necessarily brought the subject up, people have brought it up to me.
Correct.
Uh, about it, and it's kind of a mixed bag. I think everybody has told me that they support fire EMS, but they're not quite sure about the tax. And you get some folks that are like, yes, 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 let's do it. So it's kind of been a mixed bag. As to what?
The timing.
The timing? I mean, obviously, the sooner the better, right? So we can start planning and preparing for replacing of apparatus as needed. In your packets, there's kind of a breakdown of our current apparatus and some associated costs with replacement of those apparatus. Uh, the first little one, the spreadsheet has what it, what the Vietnam is, uh, replacement price. Um, and those are very generic kind of ballpark prices. The replacement plan of what we would replace it with. And then the years, looking at industry standards of what people keep their apparatus in service for length of time, uh, is how I got those numbers. So like an ambulance, seven years. Uh, they're generally used quite a bit. And so they get the most wear, some of the most wear and tear. Uh, your type one fire engines, which are the big red ones. Most smaller agents need to replace them every twenty years, just because they don't get the, the high use like the, the ambulance does. Uh, your type three engine, which is a larger engine that fights wildland fires. Most places replace those in fifteen years. Um, and then your smaller brush truck is ten years because it generally gets a lot of use and it kind of goes in places that the bigger rigs don't.
Are huge too, yeah.
And then your command rigs and rescues, like we've converted our old commander into a rescue. Um, most places every five years they replace their command style rigs. And the second, or the next column is the current gear that our apparatus was built, and then how old they are.
Okay, so my follow up question, of, of these apparatus needs, uh, what is your highest priority?
Um, probably the two wildland rigs and our second out ambulance, since our second out ambulance is twenty four years old. Technology's changed a lot. Uh, that medic ninety one was purchased in two thousand and one when the fire station was still downtown. And so it was spec to be extremely small to fit in that small building. Uh, so it is quite challenging to work out of, you're kind of like right on top of your patient, uh, which was a challenge in COVID when we were trying not to be right on top of patients. Um, but, uh, so those three would be the, the top priorities. Um, getting a, a new, so we replace medic ninety one, that would then become our first out. And medic ninety two, which we replaced a couple of years ago, with a, a used rig would become our backup.
Right.
Um, but our, our wildland rigs, I mean, that's everyone's number one concern in this area is wildland fires. And our wildland rigs are thirty five, thirty years old. Getting those updated and technologies updated, um, so we can provide the best wildland response we can. Uh, it's pretty high on my list, yeah.
Okay, last one, so if we, if we postpone this to May, and let's say it passes in May, in my mind, there we could put it's some of this, these capital expenditures in the twenty six, twenty seven budget. And you could be off the races and trying to get some of these, at least the brush, uh, engines replaced in short order. I know the money wouldn't be there immediately, but we, we can forecast that and.
Correct, the first tranche of money wouldn't come until after the end of the first quarter. The problem with that, though, is getting the businesses set up to collect the money. We're looking at a month and a half turnaround to really get them. I mean, we could do some prep work, but really just say, hey, it passed, now do this. I, I don't know, six weeks is enough to.
Yeah, I understand, but that will be a revenue year for this, uh, for this tax.
Correct.
If it passes in May, we'll have a, a nice new source of revenue coming in, you know, uh, for, I don't know, maybe a half or if not two thirds of the year. So is it safe to say, I don't know, how long it take, take to order a brush rig? Is that, is that a process? I know engines can take like six months.
Well, it's probably a year or two years out from the time you order it.
A, a brush rig?
Mm-hmm.
Oh my god. So we gotta go through a whole nother summer without, with these thirty plus year old vehicles hoping to God, it don't break, it don't break after a call.
Even, even if it passed in November, I'm standing. Are you, at least a year out?
We can at least start the process.
But yeah, we're delayed, you know, this is.
I think, we don't have, we don't have to pay until delivered, right?
Correct.
So we can at least start the process now when it passed.
Right, yeah, so whether that's November, May, I still have a lot of work to do to spec the rig out, so I
yeah, I still have a lot of work to do, spec the ring out, so if, November, May, for for ordering apparatus, it's a wash.
Okay. Tiffany, go ahead.
So, uh, on the one we were we're gonna try and get past this year, it wasn't gonna start till
July one of next year.
July, so.
Give us six months to get the businesses up to speed and it would just coincide with the new fiscal.
So if it happened in May next year, then it wouldn't start until, I mean, we can.
I mean, we can try and do it straight to say, just and. We can yeah, we can try and do July one start, but that's a quick turnaround, we could either do January one um, or we guess we could even do end of, or fourth, fourth quarter. April, May, no, yeah, April first. I mean, so we can really start it whenever we want. Which I'm sure we communicated.
Yeah, for what is for, if it's a business owner, the, I think I commented before how many sales tax rates we have cracking, see the Washington, it's really not that big of a deal to to actually just turn that on in your POS and just set it up.
That's why, yeah. Yeah.
Honestly, I think six weeks will be fine.
You think so?
I, okay, so, I, I mean, that's good to know. I, that's my take on it, I mean, but I I think that we set the parameters and they have to comply.
Correct.
So I I don't see, that was my thought too, Tiffany was, well, this passes in May, this role is out in July, like we already planned. Um, the benefit to that is that we don't have to eat the fifteen thousand dollar cost. Um, and it does give us a little more time to to kind of
Educate.
educate and inform people about this. Um, so that's kind of some of the thoughts I had, I'm I'm just curious, I'd like to hear from Courtney and Mary Ann, if you guys.
Do you want to read what the charter says?
Yes, please.
The charter says, after January one, two thousand and eight, any such ordinance or resolution or order approved by a majority of the council that creates or increases any tax, charge, or fee, the ordinance shall not be effective unless ratified by a majority vote of the city's qualified electors voting in an election where at least fifty percent of the registered voters cast a ballot or the election is a general election in an even number year. So May is not considered a general.
That is a primary election.
A primary.
But if we lost, we wouldn't be out of the fifteen.
Correct, the county's all covers that cost, yes.
In May.
And then we could run it again in November, right?
Correct. Thank you, Courtney, Mary Ann.
I am not for it going on now. Fifteen thousand dollars is a lot to pay and not know our outcome. I mean, we could be just wasting the money. I would prefer May, if that's what we wish to do, but I would prefer gen- the November one, where we have more people in a general election versus a primary. But that's my opinion.
So cost is really the main higher for you than the secondary, the the fifty percent requirement, Courtney?
All right, excuse me, cost is definitely a big one. You know, we're talking about if it doesn't pass in May, then we'll do it in November. I know that I've I've watched other governments that have uh, failed. Had a valid fail, had a measure fail, and they turned around and put it out again, and I know the optics of that aren't always well received, because people are like, I already told you now. Um, so that would definitely be a concern of mine, you know, but by that time, I feel like we could like you said, we're we're all very ambitious about this, we we could definitely get a better feel for what the general public is is thinking and feeling on it, and we can, um, move, you know, make make decisions based off of that. But I don't, I don't think spending this fifteen thousand dollars is a good use of our money right now.
Thank you.
I, we could just ask for, so to, I really couldn't.
I'm very, would you just ask Brendan? Yes, no, I was actually, yeah, absolutely, you're on the same wave, like I wanted to get our mayor's input as well. Mayor, you want to chime in on your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'm all for doing it in May with a July start date. And then if it fails, it hasn't cost us nothing and we can still do it in November, but if we, we can start educating people now. You know, and I think that would give us a better, um, reception from the citizens of Cascade Locks, because we've been out there doing the footwork, trying to tell them about it, instead of them feeling like it kind of came at them sideways, if that makes sense. So I'm all for putting it on the May ballot with the July start, which is the same start date as what we were gonna do if we did it now. The only difference is, is it's not costing us fifteen thousand dollars.
And I, and we'll look to that point, Mayor, I think that also helps to build credibility and trust with the residents when they see that we're not wasting their their money, and we're we're thinking about that.
Yes, yes. Ditto, I ditto everything you said, Pete.
And, you know, and I I hear what you're saying, Bernard, as far as, we got seven councils that are very motivated, I I really appreciate it when you're up here, that was the, when you asked the number one issue facing our city, that was the thing you spoke to and you, I think everybody's engaged and wanting that we're all willing to go out and do it. I don't think it's gonna take one doorknob, though, I I think it's gonna take a couple of visits and a lot of effort. Um, so I I totally think that we can get out there and hit every house, and I think it's gonna take more than just one conversation with people to get them to ballot. Do we have any other discussion on this, or are we ready to take a vote?
I got one question, so I guess how comfortable, I I hear one, maybe two. Okay, so, uh, is the rest of the council comfortable in saying, we, if we, if we pull this tonight, then May is the same, is that where, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think that's what I heard from everybody, Courtney expressed a hesitation with that, I think that's heard from the mayor.
Yeah, okay, so I, what the one thing I would, I I guess adds to the conversation is, if you, if we failed in May, it would be my intention to kind of analyze that and maybe say, well, maybe we dropped to six or five percent. We don't just, you know what I'm saying, I would have the new proposal that we think would get the yes, you know, instead of saying, I know you told us no, here's the exact same thing six months later, I'm not sure, I don't think, but that would be my intention, we try to dial in what caused it to fail and then have that deeper conversation that maybe seven's too much and, you know what I'm saying, so.
And I'm definitely not opposed to May, I just wanted to bring up some things that I've seen, um, yeah, so we can have a conversation about, let's let's lower it, or let's make, you know, more appealing for people to vote yes on next time.
Good discussion, thank you, and.
But with that, I mean, Jordan's presented that it has to be seven percent, I mean, I, I mean, I know five percent is better than zero percent, and six percent is better than zero percent, but Jordan has presented it only as that we really have to have seven percent. Ye- yes, for it, for it to make a significant impact in both the fire department budget and general fund, it needs to be at least three hundred and sixty grand, which is seven percent. I mean, something's better than nothing, but to get us, I mean, this one can get us to where we need to be, but it's a lot closer.
You know, and then we, of course, left with I've taken some of that hundred and eighty thousand out of the general fund and and continuing to put it towards fire and EMS. But it's, it would be a stopgap, you know, until we can figure out something more, but I think we can all agree that that the fire department is in in dire need. And we all want to support that, um, in a big way.
Do you know, I know it's been a while since you looked at the voter turnout numbers. Do you have any recollection, there's anybody here remember, what's the difference between November and May as far as voter turnout?
A lot.
A lot.
It's like, um, four hundred or fi- four hundred voters compared to uh, two, two hundred, oh, just over two hundred.
E- even. In general elections, voter turnout was around fifty percent.
It was around it.
Uh, like forty eight, forty nine.
Yeah, it was hardly.
There was some primary votes that were like thirty percent, there was one of seventeen percent. I don't remember what the ballot measure was, it might have been just a port election.
I mean, I think there's an initiative that'll get people to the polls, we just have to make sure they're informed, but that's gonna be the big lift, is to get to that fifty percent number.
Correct, yeah.
I'm AIing that question right now.
As far as voter turnout?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went back and looked at every poll result or exit poll or whatever you want to call it, precinct report, um, oh gosh, back to two thousand and ten, I think. And I don't think we ever got above fifty percent, yeah, it was something forty, that may have been our highest.
Fifty percent, I don't, yeah.
Mayor, did you have your hand up, or was that just, uh, from before?
Yeah, I did, I just wanted to say that I I think that la- when we went with the, um, measure that we did for the fire and EMS that we pay on our electric bill, I always felt like we should have went for more money, the people would have done it. So I really feel strongly, and we can carry on a conversation later about it, but I think the May one should be like at ten percent, and if that don't pass, then we go down to seven percent. But I don't think we should go less than seven percent. That and that's just my thought, because I think the people who are voting really want fire and EMS in our town. And they're, and they're gonna be footing very little cost of this, but it means a lot to us, because most of our services are spent on people that are tourists.
I agree.
That's a good strategy.
Yeah, I like the idea of bumping it up a little bit, and it gives somebody a little bit back to seven, right, I, that's a good strategy, it could work.
Yeah.
That could work. So, and, um, looks, we have, looks like we have a thousand thirty three registered voters. Five seventeen would be half. Two fifty nine would be half of that, and for the May twenty twenty five election, we have two hundred and six voters.
Get enough in May.
What, what, and, uh, for the general election, we had seven hundred and thirty one voters, but only seven hundred and fourteen voted for city council.
I was like, oh, okay.
What, what was that May election for, though?
That was the primary for.
Yeah, yeah, the primaries, so, I mean, so it's gonna be, it'll be.
Are you, it does most recent one that we just had?
That was the primary.
Was just, I think was just pork commission, we all already know about it.
And we, and I think already had primary, do we have primaries? Do we have?
I don't think there's any on the ballot.
No, there would have been primaries for the general, for president, for.
Oh, and the general election.
For for this year.
Senator.
Yeah. No, for this year, we, Port just had two elections, there were, there were no primaries on.
Oh. I don't know, it's, uh, for, I don't know, in, I don't know, look it up, look up Hood River County in May twenty twenty five election, because we had two hundred and six voters, that's all we had, and then for the general election, we had, for this year's, what would be for this year's?
Okay. We just, we're not, we're not, the primaries would be twenty, that's twenty four.
That did, I did.
I'm probably, I mean.
Twenty.
May of twenty six, yeah, twenty twenty. Yeah, we're talking May of twenty five, which would have the off year primary.
Yeah. Right, so that would have been for, for, um, for commissioners, so that would have been for our primary, so I, I only have, I only have the prime, I only have the
Pork. Yeah.
Correct, that's.
general election and this year's. Uh, so I look at, uh, twenty, not, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, it's a lot.
But I guess as far as tonight goes, all we're deciding is, we wanna delay this, or do we want to move forward with this?
Yeah, which they're saying.
We have a motion, do we have any other discussion on this before we move forward with the vote?
Yeah, there seems to be consensus.
And no further discussion, let's move on to the vote. Um, I always did roll call, but I guess when, uh, just.
No roll call.
Was that, was through roll call?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, attorney Cleveland recommend a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Did we get the motion?
Yep.
You're sorry.
Didn't we remind you speaking the motion, please?
Was to seventy.
Thank you.
Gabby.
They're to approve the removal of the prepared food, um, prepared food beverage tax from the November fourth, twenty twenty five ballot, and I don't know if you're able to save it, move it, move it to.
No, 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 we'll have to come back, it'll whole another resolution, it could reapprove it to put it on the neck of the boat, so that's a motion.
And we have a second, then.
I mean, yeah, and you think I can remember the motion?
Right.
Councilmember happy?
Yeah, I.
Councilmember Seager?
Wanted to remove it.
Yeah. Uh, I.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bob?
Yes.
Councilmember Fountain?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Motion asking the amnesty. A motion to adjourn? I made a motion in German. We'll shut a second, I was in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is it good fiction by the way?
No, it's, it shouldn't take much longer.
I know.